Let's join together. Umari sovereign, Lord of Lord and King of Kings. We give you thanks for your activity in our world and in our lives. We pray that we might be alert to those ways in which our work might fit with your work, our lives might follow your pattern for life, and that then we might know the fulfillment that you intend for us, that we might experience the goodness that you would pour out upon us and upon all in this community. And now we pray you would be particularly present with commissioners as they go about their work this evening, give them wisdom and insight for the work that they have to do. And we pray your presence also with others who have a part in the governing and the operation of our city government, watch over them and guide them always in their work. And we give you, we ask your blessings upon this community, that it might flourish and that its people might experience all that is good, all that you intend. Here as we ask, always in the most holy of names, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. You'll note we've added a proclamation to this evening's agenda. The lateness of that is my fault. I told those, well, I'm actually on the committee and said I'd get it done, and I remember that at three o'clock afternoon, so.
Perfect timing.
Thank you. Other than that, it's as previously set up.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for November 2nd, 2016.
I'll make a motion, accept.
Second.
It's been moved by Sam and seconded by Lyle that we approve the minutes of the November 2nd, 2016 meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance number 21.
On the Midland GIS solutions, just how's that going? The sewer mapping?
They're about three-fourths done with that. I talked to Ethan today, and he said probably, they, they're not gonna come next week because of Thanksgiving, short week, but a week after that, we should be winding everything up. I don't know if everybody's seen, but we've been going around pulling lids so they can get the flow lines and all that stuff in there and the pipe sizes and stuff, so they can get in and do all that.
Been going good, though?
Yes, it has.
Have you been able to see any of the results yet, Ron?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I mean, they gave me some lids to pull the other day that were full of debris and stuff, and we get the sewer department's back truck.
I've noticed that out quite a bit lately.
Yes, I've noticed that, too.
And we're sucking all them out, trying to clean them out and help everything out.
So that hopefully helps.
It will, a little bit. I mean, there's some, you know, where pipes maybe be half-full, but it's pretty hard to clean them out when you got a 24-inch or so.
Sure.
So, yeah, it's going real good.
Will this help, then, like, the situation we had earlier this fall where there was a, I think there was a cover that had been paved over? Will that help to map those?
Yes, if I know where they're at.
Okay, that's, that was the problem on that one.
Like, we got some on the highway that we just paved over, around some of them. I'm not wanting to chip them out, and I don't want to make a pothole there again, but for location-wise, yeah, I'm trying to find all them that we can find, and especially the ones in the dirt and stuff, too. Trying to find them all and get them located while they're in town. And I mean, if we come across them later, I can have Camel and Johnson go out and GPS them, and then we can send the coordinates and stuff to them, and they can put it on a map.
So it can be updated.
Yeah, it's gonna be updated all the time. There's $3,600 a year that we're paying for that to, you know, if we have any changes or anything, they can come in and update them.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Which vehicle did we have to fix on the 105, 7355, the Bud Rose, for 270501 towing repairs?
That's another 604 Ambrose.
Okay. Right. Thanks, Eric. We'll move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 21.
Second.
It's been moved by Tim and seconded by Lyle that we approve ordinance, appropriation ordinance number 21. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Proclamation for the Great American Smokeout Day. Are you gonna read it? Sure.
Proclamation, whereas November 17, 2016, has been designated the Great American Smokeout Day by the American Cancer Society, and whereas every year on the third Thursday of November, smokers across the nation take part in the Great American Smokeout event, they may use the date to make a plan to quit, or they may plan in advance and quit smoking on that day. The Great American Smokeout challenges people to stop using tobacco and helps people to learn about the many tools that they can use to help them quit and stay quit. And whereas, smoking is the leading cause of preventable deaths in this country, accounting for nearly 1,300 deaths every day, and whereas, Cloud County Health Center challenges smokers to make a healthier life by picking November 17 as their quit day, and whereas, the Community Health Assessment Committee is challenging smokers to quit smoking cold turkey by designating November 17 as Cold Turkey Day, and whereas, several restaurants in the community are commemorating the Great American Smokeout by offering cold turkey sandwiches and quit-smoking survival kits on November 17. Now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Concordia, I do hereby proclaim November 17, 2016, to be Great American Smokeout Cold Turkey Day in the City of Concordia, dated this 16th day of November, 2016.
Can you just give me to sign that? I can.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I'll, I know about five or six people that have quit smoking in the last couple of years, and I'll tell you, none of them regret it.
One of the harder things I've done, but may explain my presence here this evening.
Exactly.
The next item on our agenda is public comments. This would be a time for people who have matters to come before the City Commission to share. If there's anyone who would like to participate.
Hi, well, happy National Adoption Month. November is National Adoption Month, so, from the National Orphan Train Complex, the New York Founding Hospital led to many adoptions in our state, over 5,000. We're placed in Kansas. And an update on the statue program, we are working on round two. Of course, we've placed four statues in round one. We're waiting on the fifth to be placed and five more to arrive. And in round two out of 10, we have, we are confirmed with five. We're working on those other five. So 20 statues will be confirmed by the end of the year, and then hopefully 50 by the end of next year. But I come today to invite you to our holiday open house this Saturday from 1 to 4, and if any of you have pets, we also have Santa pics with pets, or if you just wanna see the chaos, at the Morgandale Research Center, that my dog will cause, 'cause he doesn't like Santa. At the Morgandale, Santa will come and take pictures with any of your pets, if you have goldfish, if you have pigs, if you have dogs or cats. They are welcome as well from 1 to 4, and that's a partnership with Notch and NCK Paws, so.
Will Santa be wearing his postal carrier outfit?
Good God, I wish. He will come down from Melville in his red and white convertible.
Oh.
So watch out for Santa. He almost lost his hat last year. Please come down. And all of the cookies.
He hasn't gotten bitten, has he?
No, he hasn't, which was remarkable. I'm surprised my dog didn't do it. He really didn't like him. But he will be there, the cookies will be served, and they'll all be from orphan train rider recipes. So we have two different cookbooks that have been submitted, one from the Miriam Zitter family, which was the first statue. She's the one at the Broadway Plaza. And her family put together a cookbook of all of her recipes, including many different cookies, and I think they're making the Sally cookies and the Bonbons. And then also from other orphan train riders, some of which are the statues that are representative of those children. So come on down. And also, there's treats for the dogs and cats this year, so we'd love to see you there.
Thank you, Shailly. Any other public comments? Okay. Moving on, then, we'll go to the manager's report.
I wanted to see somebody get a cat to hold still and pose for a picture.
I think I could do that with my cat, yeah.
Do you have value for kitties?
I don't know. I think probably.
Sedation, or, yeah. One thing you have in front of you this evening is the information about the leadership program, sign up, and that's, on the, the one we're talking about is the one on the inside front that says, "You Lead Now," this one, and it's got, I ran out of colored copies, I'm sorry, and it's got the dates there. So apparently, we could go to any of those dates, although in the grant application material, they kind of indicated a preference to have people sign up for in the first three, and I think that's what we're trying to do at this point, is get as many people in those sessions as we can, and then, once we have those sessions, then maybe try to convene some planning amongst all the people that have been to these things. So I know some of you have an easier time going to this, getting this for, than others, and Mayor Hash, nor this evening, actually, the April one is the only one that doesn't cover the City Commission Day for us. So for those three months, for the commissioners, it's April. Simplifies or anything. So I don't know how many of you have decided to go, and if you could tell us, we're trying to get all this lined up and scheduled with all the entities this month if we can, so that's what I'm talking about. I know Commissioner Sacco, you mentioned you are, and.
I will.
Anybody else? You're going, Commissioner Lambert, okay? Tougher, tougher than.
Yeah, I might have something else right around that time period, so.
Okay, wow.
Don't know at this time.
Okay, so we'll put the three of you down, and we do need to know by the end of the month, if possible.
Okay. And you said the April 11th to 13th is the best one.
That's the only one that we're gonna actually be able to have due to our own commission meeting schedules.
Okay.
City will pay for two nights in the hotel. Most meals are furnished, whatever that means. Amber and Stacy went down to the opening meeting along with Kay.
Kim Reynolds.
Kim, I'm, I name problems there. Beg your pardon, Kim Reynolds. And they reported healthy snacks were served, so bring your own.
Well, thank God they were healthy.
Yes.
I'm getting the snack, I don't care.
Okay, so we'll put the three of you who've indicated down for the April meeting, and we'll just assume the other two, you probably aren't gonna make it unless you let us, no. Thank you. Wellness and Recreation Director, as indicated by the memo, I've put that out for your review and indicates where I would like to see the position go at this point. When we had some public comment on this subject a few weeks ago, there was a fairly common thread of people would like to see more and better, and that, and partly in response to that, in our discussions of this matter as a personnel matter, we have discussed increasing pay, turning into a salary position commensurate with the other department heads, and my own addition to that is to make this position Wellness and Recreation by title and by orientation, and expect the Wellness and Recreation Director not only to administer all of our existing programs, but also to play a very active part in interfacing with other community organizations and encouraging and organizing wellness-type activities. So I've tried to be pretty comprehensive in this job description, which I drew from scratch, as to, and playing off the bullet points that we had discussed earlier, as to what this position could look like. Commissioner Pounds mentioned this evening, it might be well to add as a possible activity in their runs and that sort of thing. There are communities where a run is a big deal and people show up, and I have learned just a bit about that before, that you kinda have to build it up and get on the schedule and pick a time when nobody else is having their big run, all that sort of thing, but can be done. So that might be something we could add to it. Other than that, I just wanted to hear what reflections on this, if any. You may have my intent going forward, if this position is acceptable, or when we have one that is, would be to base an application form very closely on this description to get the specific informations, items of information before us, and to base a metric for scoring things based upon the answers to those descriptions. And to do the hiring in-house, we have staff department members that are very familiar with athletics and with the operation of athletic programs in our community that I think are well-qualified to help assess a person's abilities in that respect, which is certainly their job, but we have other matters that are important to us as we interview a person, because they're gonna be expected to be a part of our management group and to fit with us, and to pitch in and pull in order.
Makes sense to me.
So, does anybody have any thoughts on the description itself?
I like the professionalization of this position, of the job description, especially the definition of the bachelor's degree that you're looking for, so.
And indeed, we are open, as it states in there, and as our, our job description is always due to any combination of experiences and education, but it is weighted toward someone that has some education on this subject. I have no idea, whenever, we get very varying responses on these things, so I have no idea how many people will respond or who they'll be. I expect some interest, though.
So do you have a timeline as far as?
Tom, let me know this week, the February 24th will be his last day. He's going to stay through the winter adult volleyball and basketball programs. So we will probably begin advertising sometime around the end of the year, when all the other paperwork is ready to go, and.
I would, I would wonder if there might be merit in advertising earlier if someone was wanting to make a clean shift at the beginning of the new year. Could be a prime time and would allow for some overlap with Tom.
Any other thoughts?
I was just looking at February 24th, and a caper's retirement, Tom may wanna talk to a caper's rep because.
He is.
He has, okay, well.
Stacy, you know, working on all that.
If you get a full quarter in, then you get a year credit, so.
I think they've got that timed out.
Okay, very good.
The other thing where I think I would wanna add a little bit more is, is overseeing the safety procedures that are followed on the fields for all games.
It's in there a couple times hand-didly, but it just stands.
Because it's just safe time, but I mean, I think they have to get more involved in safety regulations and procedures, and things going that way. And then also have procedures, if, say, someone is hit with a baseball, you know, things that they should follow, protocol.
I like that suggestion. I think that's a good idea.
So creation over the adoption of protocols, safety protocols.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they're very important.
Maybe that could be a more a handbook item, as opposed to a job description, but, you know, somewhere.
Yeah, but he should be, put that up.
This past year, for the first time, our EMTs, our emergency service personnel, conducted safety training for the coaches, unfortunately in response to a severe injury that took place a year before. So, you know, that's something we plan to increase, but we'll continue, but, you know, making some protocols and having a person who's capable of doing that sort of thing without a whole lot of direction.
Yeah, 'cause we still have the ambulance at the football games, right?
Do we do this?
High school junior high.
Okay.
High school, middle school.
We charge for those.
I think this is no slight position. I really think that the opportunity is significant, and I'm very hopeful that the right candidate will, will really function as a team player in many senses within your manage, within the city's management team, within the athletic groups around town, but also with the agencies and entities that facilitate athletics. It's my understanding that there's not as positive of relationships as one might hope for with some of our organizations, and I think that there's a tremendous opportunity for improvement, not only for improved interaction, but greater efficiency of cost, so I really, I think this is, I think this person is gonna have their work cut out for them, but there's a lot of opportunity for them.
Those relationships with other organizations require constant tending, and for my part, I've probably done more with the administrative part of it, so I think the athletic part of it needs more attention with that. None of this, by the way, is intended as any criticism of our current director, who's done just exactly what we paid him to do and asked him to do, and done it well for several years, so.
You know, this, this sort of seems like most of the home improvement projects that I have, that we start out with just replacing one thing, but when we really start looking at it, we might as well do, if we're doing it, then we might as well do this and this and this, so. So no, I think, I think Tom's done a great job, but when we have the opportunity to, to do this, might as well get it done right.
Okay. Thank you for your support, I appreciate it. Let me get back to my notes here. Could we go to the ambulance charts? Several meetings ago, one of you, I think it was Commissioner Sacco, asked for some information about the ambulance income and expense, and I'm sorry, I kinda let that one slip, so we took the subject up, and these were all prepared by Amber, of course. And I'll just drop off a little bit here. Pretty much self-explanatory as far as where the income comes from, one that's not immediately obvious. On the revenue, the red slice in our local agreements, that's what we get from the townships out in the country. There are contracts with them where they pay us a certain amount of money to provide ambulance service, are called interlocal agreements, so that's where that terminology comes from. And our philosophy with the townships we provide service for is that they should pay approximately the same amount of taxes per their population as the City of Concordia does. So it's, it's a little inexact, but that's what that slice comes from. The big blue slice is our general fund, and of course, you can see on the left side, not quite half of our funding comes from the general fund for this, so the, what that represents is basically the expenses that insurance doesn't cover and uninsured people can't pay. I can delve into a little further and everything. The expenses you can see is very much personnel, of which is kind of interesting, is one thing that says it's, that they're taking care of equipment, considering the cost of some of their equipment that we can get by for that much, that the equipment is an relatively small slice of pie there. If we can go to the next, do you have any questions on this page? If we can go to the next page, then. Payments received, here's the money actually coming in, as you can see, Blue Cross Blue Shield is second biggest Medicare, is by far our biggest reimbesser. Patient pay is people who don't have insurance, or their insurance doesn't cover our ambulance run. All others, I'm not quite sure what that is, but I suppose other insurance companies like that.
That'd be my bet.
Okay. If we could have the last one, then, okay. And here's amounts billed, as you can see, there's a big difference between the amounts billed and mostly in the patient pay. Patient pay is really mostly patient can't pay. We've got like $37,000 out of that. We run to everybody, we don't turn anybody down, we get an ambulance call, we go, and we sort out the billing later, there's no other way to do that.
It'd probably be illegal, otherwise.
Yeah, well, might be. And, but, none of the.
Their communities that get around.
None of the insurers reimburse us for the full expense of our operation. I've had a couple opportunities to talk about this with administrators who are experienced, you know, coming from the communities, that sort of thing, and I think this is about how it goes, you know. So, and this figure, if you go back to the previous one, please, the amount, maybe it's the first page, well, it's the same figure, the $378,000, okay, stop it, okay, the $312,000, I would've guessed that to be higher, that, that hangs around there, you know, the last time I kinda calculated this, I think it was more. So, you know, that's a major part of our general fund expense, but there's really no way to get around that under our current medical payment structure. As you know, from the reports you get, we do aggressively bill and try to collect and deal with all of the billing procedures for all the entities, and have a person who's trained in that, who has really increased our income from it, and that's approximately reflected here. If you've kept track of them here throughout the year, you're gonna see, you're seeing they're down, that's reflecting changes in practices, and so is how patients are handled, and just what calls we're getting, so it's going to continue to be a major expense for the city general fund, and I don't see a way around that.
Are those inter-around local agreements, is that looked at every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's.
And as costs rise, does it increase percentage?
Yeah, it's calculated each year based on the runs, from the runs and revenue and expenses from previous year.
Yeah, we looked at that pretty closely, what, about three years ago, Larry, is that sound right?
Yes.
We hiked it. It's not like you're hiking, we're a lot from that, but, you know, it's fair. Same, like, we started raising, like, how much the football team, you know, so like when we send the EMT ambulance out to the football games and stuff, we raised those actually quite a bit, if I remember right.
Yes, we did. We hadn't been charging for those, that was a fairly controversial thing in some quarters when we did it. The townships are billed based upon the total number of runs for the group, and then the total assessed valuation, and divided among them according to their assessed valuation, all right? So in a given year, a township may have a lot more runs and relatively few, relatively smaller amount, or may have fewer runs with payroll of higher amount, because we group them all together rather than do it one township at a time. So the townships have been signing these agreements for 10 years or more now, and.
Do those townships levy a?
Yes, it's levied through the county treasurer.
Okay, so they're prepared to.
Yes.
Have funds for.
Where the money comes from, it's property tax.
Larry, I noticed that when you were showing the Medicare, it was only about 50% payment.
Yes.
Is that typical?
Yes.
Yeah, and Blue Cross Blue Shield's a little bigger percentage.
In, in mine, Medicare pays about, about 55% of what's billed, and Blue Cross Blue Shield usually pays out at about 75% of its billed. And Medicare's paying, Medicare's reimbursement has been further decreased by a sequestration that just needs to kinda go on ad nauseam, but it's a further reduction.
On the personnel side of it, too, the requirements for someone to do this are high. You have to have trained people, the training is expensive, the employees are valuable. We have several paramedics with even more training, they're paid commensurately, so it's an expensive thing to staff, and you can't just get a kind of entry level, you know, twelve bucks an hour kind of thing, but we pay these people well.
I think you have an excellent staff, too.
While we're on the subject, I do want to compliment Chief Foss, because he's who makes all this. While we're on the subject, I do want to compliment Chief Foss because he's who makes all this go and, and certainly has improved every facet of his operation, in my opinion. So, unless you have other questions on that. We had prepared this evening in case there was a need for public discussion, the PowerPoint that I sent you all about the wastewater treatment plant, that's all been posted online. Some interested parties have been asking some questions about it, received notice about it and discussed it some. And I don't think we have anybody here this evening to discuss it, except the five of you, so we can go through that whole thing. Jeremy and Tim and I did that this morning, and it took us about an hour, and it was perfectly fascinating. But if you have questions about any of those components, for that matter, we can bring it up and talk about it. Otherwise, there it is, and it's public knowledge, and if the subject does come up, you know. And this wasn't a new conversation where we're making things up that we went this morning, things we've discussed and discussed and turned around and talked about with engineers and so forth and so on, all this time. But it reminded me of how thoroughly versed these two guys are in what we're doing, and they can, we could have had a two-hour presentation out of this if I'd let them keep occupying.
So you kind of
I had to kind of crank them along a little bit, yeah. Well, actually, what I was doing was cross-examining, it was the first time I'd done that in a while, it's kind of funny, so. So, that's prepared, it's online, we've done our best to inform the public about this, and not having heard anything more from anyone, want to say anything, fine, otherwise, we'll just skip that part.
Well, I, I think it was a good question for the person to ask because it, it made you guys look in greater detail. And it gave us the information that, that we're doing the right thing.
The, for the amount of money we're spending, we would expect to be able to tell, explain why we're doing it, so.
Absolutely.
One figure that I think would be interesting, and I don't know if there's really any way to, to attain it, I think that there's been some concern voiced about the, the priority level of this. And, and my understanding, someone said, well, how, you know, is this, is this thing going to break? I, I think generally, the only statistic I usually use is, is fifty-fifty, it will or it won't. But
Yeah, well, let me, let me just delve a little bit.
Real, real quick, my, my question more is, if we didn't do this, and, and we said, you know what, fine, we're going to, we're going to put this on hold, and we're just going to keep doing what we can to keep it going. What happens then when this thing breaks, when, when we can't find a replacement? What, what kind of costs are associated with, I'm guessing we'd have to find some way to transport the sewage, right? I mean, what would happen if?
We talked about this, so Tim, do you want to, you want to talk about that? Go ahead. What, what happens if it just quits working?
If something quits, a clarifier or any of the pumps or anything like that, it has to work twenty-four seven. There's no choice. KDHE, EPA, right now, we have a very good relationship with both, and I would like to keep it that way. And one of the things is, there has to be redundancy, so if there, if something does break down, you have some type of backup or you have a plan to get something there, and usually, if you have to have something, you can get it if you have the money. You have, you can get whatever you need here in twenty-four hours, if you want to spend the money. Most times, you want to plan these things out because you just do. Most of the equipment out there is, is very outdated, and most of it is either beyond repair or they don't make parts for it anymore. And I'm running into more and more of, they don't make it, parts for that anymore. Pumps, stuff that's been there since nineteen seventy-seven, you'd be amazed how many companies the, it'll jump, the, the drawings or the plans for, for just a pump out there.
Tim, have you had a chance to tour other newer plants?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know what's out there.
Yeah, there, the, there's several comparable sized plants. There's one in Linsburg, and actually, the tank manager for that one's coming to kind of knock heads with him tomorrow, just on the process that we're doing out there with the ORP and ORP controls. They have an updated, modern plant that has, I mean, everything is new, concrete, pumps, everything is, is brand new. And even after that, they, they had everything planned, there was still stuff they found out after they got it running. It's kind of like what you were saying about fixing a house, once you get it, oh, we need to fix this, and eh, we kind of need this and this. But, yeah. And we're not, we're not asking for anything that's frivolous or something that we don't need. Most of the stuff that we have out there, like I say, has to work twenty-four seven. It's got to work in a caustic environment where you have H two S gases and different things that just eat away at aluminum, steel, whatever. Humans. So.
And how many gallons of water do you determine a day?
Right now, we're averaging about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. That's came down some over the last five to ten years. We were averaging about, about another hundred thousand gallons more than that. So, but that's on average.
A day.
Tim. This, earlier this week, I was taking a shower, okay? And, you know, we have soft water, and I could tell, you know, it's time for some, you know, some salt in the bin. And when I do that, I usually go buy ten bags, I'll come in, buy ten forty-pound, about four hundred pounds of salt. I'm a big contributor of putting salt in, in the system. I mean, anybody that has a soft water unit. Can water be treated at the municipal level, at the city level, softened so that, you know, we don't have to add salt to it and then remove it then, you know, with a fancy sophisticated system?
Would that be more under, would that be more under Jeremy's? The answer is yes.
Well, you know, I don't want to bring something up now that's going to change our plans, but, you know, I just, just thought about that this week, you know, my word, if we don't put salt in there, we wouldn't have to take it out, so.
We'll answer your question for you. There are, there are many units that have drinking water treatment facilities that do things we don't, for various reasons. You just heard everything I know about it, right? But we'll answer your question.
Well, and there is a current business in town that would be hurt.
Yeah, sure. Well, then, then, then we're treating all water, not necessarily just
Yeah.
My shower water.
Yeah, that's true.
Anyway, I just thought, gosh, we wouldn't have to put it in there, we wouldn't have to take it out, but.
You know, as, as I've been asked about this and talked about this, I think that the biggest, one of the biggest challenges that I see is, is trying to be proactive, and I, I think that we have an old city with old water lines. There's a lot of needs within the water department. But, but I think with the presentation that's been made and with the current state of our, our facility, I think there's been a lot of accolades handed your guys' way, which are, which are more than due. You guys have done a phenomenal job with, with what we have. I, I'm nervous about not acting when we can and then end up with quite literally a giant mess on our hands of, of trying to figure out how to manage four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day while putting something out for bid, while trying to get this other thing constructed on the side while we're just trying to salvage what we can, I think. I, I think it, it doesn't make sense to replace something when it works, and it makes more than enough sense that we should have replaced it when we could have after it breaks. And, and I just feel that, that this is the right thing to do. Is it absolutely necessary? No, we, we can wait. Do we want to wait? What does it cost to wait? You know, I, I'm worried about what those costs would be. I think it's easy to wipe those off and say, well, it wouldn't be there, but gosh, let's, let's try to do something before we have to. I think, I like being in a position where I can walk away from a deal if it's not the right deal, as opposed to, I don't like it, but we got to get it here in twenty-four hours, so, yeah, we'll pay ten thousand dollars for a thousand dollar part because it's the only one we can get. I just, I don't like being put in a corner like that, and I feel like if we don't move when we can, we're going to end up, whether it's a big thing or a little thing, and we're still going to need to replace it at some point down the road.
Yeah. We're just operating on borrowed time, basically, it's just
You know, I'm one, I'm one of the persons who really are pushing for infrastructure and repairing infrastructure. And when you look through that list, through that PowerPoint, there are some items that definitely need to be replaced. And I guess my only comment on the whole thing, because the thing did start off, and people are talking about, well, the new regulations and the new limits and everything coming, that hasn't come to pass. And I'm not so sure with the new administration that it's going to come to pass. But there are items on that list, that PowerPoint, that really look like they need to be replaced. And my feeling on the whole thing is, those are the items that should be replaced. And then as the other things get closer, in other words, instead of putting the whole thing out at once, what items really need to be replaced now? Because you're right, Chuck, we can't stand our way till the thing breaks. But then you stand there and say, okay, but this we can get by with maybe for one more year. And as it wears out more, then we replace that, so we stagger it. And say within a few years, you have a whole new system. It also then allows you, by doing that, to stay ahead of new technology that keeps coming out every time. Because, let's face it, by the time you get, put this whole thing in, the odds are there's something new out there that'll even do a better job when you go down the line. But I do see things in that list that really do need to be fixed. I mean, you just look at the pictures and the whole thing. And I really think if we approached it that way and got the public out there to look and actually see some of that PowerPoint slides, and they saw that. And I know telling them, well, it's online, well, they're not going to get it online, they're just going to stay back and, and think what they want to think. But if they saw it in the paper and stuff and say, this is stuff that really needs to be fixed, this is for your safety, for the safety of the citizens. And then we kind of break it down that way, I think we'd get by with a lot easier battle that we're up against right now.
We have done that to some extent, and already in dividing this into two phases, and the phase we're working on right now is the things that, in our judgment, really do need to be fixed. Then there's another phase, that's a, that's a subject for another day, more study, more planning, it's all stuff that we don't have, but we'll make that case to you when the time comes to do that, and it'll probably be sometime next year when we're kicking in on the engineering of that. If there's anything at all on the list of things that we are planning now that doesn't absolutely have to happen, it's the boxes, the soundboxes that go over the blowers. That's an employee safety issue to some extent, although we've lived with it all these years. But if you spend any time out there when those things are going on, you get the point real quick, they're very loud, very constant. I think you could hear them on the east side of town, quite a ways into town, on a quiet day, so they're very loud.
Huh.
So to me, this is an employee matter.
That's what that is.
I know snap to repeat things a lot, Tim.
Yeah, I always thought it was, I always thought it was awesome for some reason.
You thought it was, you know, yeah.
There's so much noise up there, Larry, I know it's not that.
No, no, if you go out and listen to those blow, blowers, you know, the, and that's a constant loud humming noise. Also, I, I, actually, I still learn some of these every time we talk. With the process that we're doing now, those blowers used to basically just run. But the process we're using now that has dramatically improved our plant's performance has them kicking on and off, on and off, on and off. So, that's more startups, and we're at a point now where they kind of screech and squeal every time you start them up. So, get them out of the weather, we'll probably make them perform a little bit better. So, that may happen, but to me, this is an employee comfort issue, and it's a twenty-five thousand dollar issue, and we can, we ought to be expended at, just in, in some degree a safety issue. Although usually if they're out there working on something, they turn it off so you can hear each other.
Yeah, well, you know, we could get a three hundred thousand dollar lawsuit too.
Because we, somebody got hurt, yeah. So, so there's that side of, but really, Commissioner Sacco, what is in this group of things, and we can stand here and make the case for each one, is things that we think need to be done now. And the rest of it, like I said, we'll make that case to you down the road, kind of get this part going and get a more complete look at some of the things that we still think we're going to need. Because we're not sure, and our engineers aren't sure, how much of these things on the remaining list, or to what extent they're going to be required at this point.
Well, I say, like I said, we're reaching a point where the stuff really needs to be repaired, fixed, then we have to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I disagree with the statement that was made that, well, this will be stuff that doesn't affect me. It is stuff that'll affect you because it affects the city.
Yeah, about the time that our sewer system quits working.
Exactly. But I, but, and I really think that, I, I like the approach that was made on some of the emails going back and forth, but I really think that's something that needs to be in the paper and let people know, hey, this ain't, you know, because right away, everyone starts talking, phase one, phase two, they combine the whole thing together. And it's not. What we're saying is, phase one is what's necessary right now, and we need to get that point across to the public, and I think by doing that, people are going to say, yeah, this is stuff that needs to be done.
We invite the media to study our finding.
Totally, because, I mean, this is infrastructure, and if we don't, I mean, just like the streets, we're working on those now, the whole thing, this is stuff that if we want to keep the city from falling apart, literally, it needs to be done. And to me, having a treatment center, it's, it's, that, it's the welfare of the city.
You can't
You can't, I do it without, and that's why I was really totally against the statement that was made on that. But it comes onto it as, and then we just focus on this and don't even talk or mention phase two and bring it up until we reach that point.
But if we, but if we But if we don't do that, then there'll be the, there, there's the potential for someone to say, well, you, you, you took it off the, off the books, and now it's coming up out of nowhere. Why haven't you been talking about this?
No, put this way, it's been talked about, but I think the focus needs to go on what we need to get done right away.
Well, you know, what I could do too, rather than putting all the burden on our, on the media, is prepare kind of a reasonably short news release, ask them to run it. It's a, in a nutshell, kind of boils down to what we're doing now.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
I like that.
And that would then answer questions for people who want to follow up on that and
Right, I think folks who emailed us probably are going to look at that, that online PowerPoint. The rest of them probably don't care, probably won't, so you're right.
And just as a clarification, we already have a permit with suggested limits. That's already out there, and so they're basically telling you or telling us what the limits are going to be. So, and, so we already know what the limits are, what they're, what they're going to be, and that's what we're shooting for. We hope to beat those limits. You know, I like mystifying the scientists back east to say we should be able to do what we're doing with the equipment that we are doing it with. But those limits are being made, and more than likely, at the end of a certain period, I think it's a year or two years, those will be legal limits that we will have to meet. Right now, they're giving us a grace period because we're making these improvements to the plant.
Along with every other plant in the state.
And, and
But they started talking about that in two thousand thirteen, that's how fast that things move in Kansas.
And I, I want to just reiterate that, that, that is how the state works. We have Department, Department of Agriculture is who does the restaurant visitations, you know, and they come in at least once a year, and they do a whole inspection process. And every year, there's a new area of focus that they look at in each restaurant, and then they sit down and they will tell us, okay, right now, we're not, you know, you're not going to miss this points, but this is our area of focus for this year, and then next year, it's going to be, you know, you'll lose points for it and stuff. And that's how they do it. I mean, they, you know, they normally give us about a grace period of one or two years, educate the restaurants of how it's working, and then you have to start getting it, you know, done right, so, and every year, it's a new thing.
And that's when they start sending us fines?
No, they just give you a time.
Normally, they just give you a time.
They just don't start fighting, I will go with that one.
And honestly, the way it works too is, is you have And honestly, the way it works too is, is you have what's called critical violations, which the levels, I'm sure, would be a critical violation. And if, most things you just have to fix. But if you miss some of these critical violations, they will come back out, and then you could lose your license to serve, be a restaurant.
And for, for me, you know, it's my name on the, on all the documents out there. And I can be personally fined and in prison if I falsify records or if I knowingly do something that's gonna harm the environment.
Do we have an occasion on the campus?
Hayes, Hayes, Kansas City.
Really?
If they were knowingly fraud and false reports.
Yep. And you went to jail.
One more question. From my information, 2009, what, 400,000 was put into the treatment plant? What was done then?
That's the first clarifier.
That was the first clarifier.
First clarifier, is that the one that looked nice in the picture?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
Well, that one, that's when that was done.
It's very efficient, very good for our process that we're, we're doing. The old one, and as you saw in the picture, it was beyond repair.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, totally, totally.
Yeah, we're, and right now, we're kind of tied to the, the new one. And it needs maintenance done on it that we're holding off because we can't really use the south clarifier. So we're, we're ready for the improvements.
Totally agree. I mean, stuff wears out.
Well, yeah, and then it's, if we can't ever shut it down to fix it, then we're gonna be, we're just gonna grind up the tools that we have instead of giving.
That's right.
And I think that Larry and the city staff have formed a good plan. It's phase one, let's fix, you know, Larry's put a lot of thought into this.
Tim, don't sit down yet, please. I have another question.
So anyhow, I, I think, I think we've, we've got a pretty good game plan on this, I guess, is what I wanna say. That, that, that there's a lot of thought that's been put into it, and that you guys are trying to not spend any more money than you have to.
And we started paying for this, you know, three years ago.
Three years ago, yeah. And that will.
We knew it was coming.
Cover the, the no, right? Okay. One question. You made a comment that, at this point, we're, we have 450,000 gallons of raw sewage a day, and that's down by about 100,000 gallons. Do you have any idea what that is due to? Is it because our population has declined? Is it because of low, low-flow toilets? Is it because we're better at conservation, or do you have any idea?
Yes.
All of that.
All of the above.
All of the above, okay.
And, but although we have less flow, the BOD, or the strength of the wastewater has pretty much stayed the same. With the lower water amounts that use like in wash machines and everything else, you use a higher concentration of the soaps that you use is more concentrated. So it has more of the things that you're having us take out. Phosphorus and nitrates, things like, things of that nature. Yeah, low-flow things, yeah, just simple concentration. And part of it is lower population. Back in the nineties, it was a million gallons a day.
Oh.
Early nineties, it was over a million gallons.
Really?
It was running almost at capacity of the, of the plant as designed in the seventies. So.
Well, you know, technology's always improving things. And, you know, just as an example, switching to LED lighting, you know, is, is, I think they said if the whole country could switch everything to LED lighting, I mean, it was billions, if not trillions of dollars saved over a fairly short period of time.
So you haven't heard the bad news about LEDs?
Cause cancer?
No, the blue wavelength is disrupting sleep patterns. And so they're gonna try to have to figure out a different wave pattern for the LED. Anyway.
I wonder if I've been getting up at two.
It's because of your LED lights. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much, Tim. Thank you, Jeremy.
It's clear that you guys are very knowledgeable about this, and I appreciate your expertise, so.
Thanks.
That's all my head for management comments.
Okay. And we'll move on to Commissioner comments.
Got a call late this afternoon from Joe Collins. He had an accident today at Tenth and Valley. And he, he told me that it's a dangerous intersection. His brother had two wrecks there, and his today, and, and a couple others he, he knew about. And, and the person that was, was ticketed for $155. And all along, I thought he was angry at being ticketed, but it wasn't him who got fined. So he, he felt like there needs to be a yield sign on Tenth Street to avoid some, any more accidents, so.
I can have the city engineer look at the intersection. I can also, you know, get with Bruce on that and see how many actual accidents were there. You know, a lot of the ones that are, I don't know if it's $500 or $1,000 now, they don't record them, but some more expensive ones, so. I can find all that out. I can tell you, probably since the school closed over there, the traffic flows a lot less, so. And Don Dean will probably tell us all that, what he sees there, 'cause he'll go study, you know, two, three times there or something.
What is that big hole on 11th Street?
11th and Hill.
Yeah, that water is gushing out all over. Is that your mess?
Contractor hit a water line.
I figured it had to be a water line.
I'll do that for you.
It's like a river.
I'll call him back, I'll talk to him.
Or something, and I'll, or maybe in the second meeting in December, I'll get back to you with some information.
He also mentioned about the street, and I, I didn't get.
This street?
Yeah, I didn't get into it with him, but I, I think if, if it comes up again, I'll ask him if he has talked to his neighbors to see if, you know.
That's the one we dealt with this.
Right, right.
Contacted us, and we put out a letter to all of the people that were involved and let them know what it would cost to redo their street as a special assessment, and asked them to contact us if they were interested, and heard from no one.
No one, okay, very good.
So we went through that process.
I'll share that with him if he brings it back.
Yeah, I mean, he's the one that's gonna have to.
He did, okay.
At this point.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Yep, that's all that's mine.
That's a huge hole.
Actually, M and D putting in fiber optic, they were boring down the street, on Hill Street, towards that phone manhole, and they bored right into our two-inch.
And call Kansas Call One?
Yeah, everything was located except for that two-inch line because it's not on the map.
Okay.
So.
It is now.
Yeah. There's, it doesn't, it doesn't feed anything, it's just an old, an old two, two-inch line that went across the intersection. We had, Gary and I both remember it. We both were on, that line broke in, in the middle of the intersection years and years ago. But it just didn't get located because it's not on the map. Somebody else did locate, so they didn't know about that two-inch line.
So since it's not used, can you just cap it off?
Going, that's gonna be a project, maybe this fall. We'll just dig it up where it, where it connects to our bigger main and disconnect it, so it's out of there. But for now, we had to.
Sell pumpkins tonight.
Yeah, yeah. We just, we don't, we don't deal with two-inch stuff, so we didn't have the correct parts. Actually, the guy that hit it drove down to McPherson to get us a flange. We had the valve, we were gonna put a valve on it and just valve it off, so. Since he felt bad about hitting it, he drove to go get it for us.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, nice of him. Limit my.
Anyway, yeah, it's leak season. We've had three leaks in the last three days, so. We're taking care of those as we get them.
Now, is that because it's getting cooler at night, or, or?
Maybe a little. Ground shifting.
Ground shifting, okay.
I just want you to know that Tim does a fantastic job out there, and I appreciate everything he does. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything?
I, I did, I had the opportunity to go for a bit of a college reunion this weekend, and folks were asking me what I was up to, and word started getting out of my political proclivities, I guess. And some were fairly surprised that I was in the position I was. And I, I was, I was surprised myself about how much passion I really do have for Concordia, and what a great community this is, and what a great opportunity it is to be in Concordia and to raise a family here. I think this is a remarkable community, and it was just impressed upon me even further. So I wanted to give a thanks for everybody, and, and the city staff that make this city run the way it does. It's not perfect, we got some stuff to work out, but by and large, it's not a person that can't be talked to. You have a question, there's somebody that can answer it. I think we have a remarkably respectful and respectable staff that, that's here. And just really feel very, very fortunate to be here, and I wanna say thank you as we come into the season of thanks for allowing this to be my home. So thank you all very much for the work you do day in and day out.
Do I see, see state office in your future?
I, I will need to be institutionalized at some point of that. Folks, folks asked me how I got into, I said, you know, I was really just interested in how the process worked. I maybe should have just rented a book or two from the library. Satiated my educational pursuits a little more sanely, but here I am.
First hand's always better.
Yeah, that's what I'm told, so here I am.
All right, let's move on to staff comments then. We've already heard from a number of you.
The city staff is gonna start putting up the snowflakes tomorrow. And if you get a chance, go out to the airport, get Airport Park and drive through there. I don't know if you guys know where the tire is, where the beacon is on top of it. Steve Richards had us, well, he asked me if I'd put this airplane with a Snoopy in it, the president's dropping out. Gets up on the tire, you might look at it, 'cause he might be coming here to ask you if you wanna take it and put it up every year, so.
A little bit of a project to put up?
Yes, it was quite a bit of project. It's really heavy, and we put some cables up there, pulleys up there, and some winches to pull it up and stuff.
Might wanna leave it up all year?
Well, we put it up in a manner to where it's easy to get up and down. We just had to take the high reach out and kind of tie it back a little bit. It's not too bad the way we put it up.
Cool.
If you wanna check it out.
Thank you. Get those things up before the weather turns cold.
Not be too late.
Yeah.
Mayor and Commissioners, last Wednesday, we started administrator training and configuring our next-generation 911 equipment. Thursday and Friday, they had the training for the dispatch personnel. Our new phone system went online on Monday, and they've continued, continued to test and configure that through today. About 10 after 5, they started dismantling one of the dispatch stations and putting that equipment in, and it will go online about 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Then they'll disassemble the other station, and it'll be completed by tomorrow afternoon.
Excellent.
Good.
And Bruce, this might not be your expertise, but why did the tornado sirens go off last Sunday? About 3 o'clock, over in our neighborhood, the sirens went off for a good about three minutes.
No answer for you.
Does anybody know?
Chief, well, somebody told me that dispatch was clicked wrong button, and the hazard goes through a cycle in an emergency.
Okay, I just wondered since Trump won, if the Russians were doing a, you know.
I thought they were an air race. We have an airway or something, I don't see any bad weather.
I heard gunshots on the river too, and I was like, oh.
Oh my gosh.
Yes, nothing like an impromptu test.
Well, you know, I'm thinking, well, there's no, you know, normally that's Monday at noon.
Did I miss work today?
The weather's clear.
Okay, did we miss anybody?
I just wanna invite anybody that hasn't been out to the wastewater plant. If you wanna come out and get an up-close and personal look at it, come on out. If you have any questions about what we're doing and the process that we're doing, come on out. I love talking about, we don't get visitors out there very often, for some reason. But if you do come out, I'll make sure that all your questions are answered.
You know, I took a tour as a sixth grader for the Wichita treatment plant, and I thought it was really fascinating. I might take you up on your offer too.
Come on out.
Appreciate it.
I know Lyle and I did a tour a few years ago. What, what year was that facility finished originally? 'Cause I, I remember seeing a plaque. When was?
There's two plaques out there. The original building was made in 1954. And then when EPA was formed in 72, that's when the wall started rolling where the old plant wouldn't meet the new standards. And the new plant was built between 76 and 78. And it just kind of added on to what was there.
Yeah, I actually, construction was on that kind of thing. I was fresh out of Otech.
We actually have some black and white slides out there, construction.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess we're ready for an executive session.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I have a question. Executive session for 15 minutes to discuss confidential business data, and inviting myself and Ashley.
I'd moved to adjourn to an executive session, inviting City Manager Yuri and Ashley Hutchinson.
Second.
It's been moved, and moved by Chuck and seconded by Lyle to retire into executive session for a period of 15 minutes, inviting Larry and Ashley in order to discuss confidential business data. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
But my husband always claims.
You might check, I don't know what they do with them.
Okay, no action was taken. At this time, we're ready to adjourn for a study session regarding land bank, the land bank ordinance.
Dang, I forgot about that.
Do we need to? Okay, let's talk about the land bank.
The land bank, this is something that we only just briefly discussed. I just gave you the statutes last time around. The concept here is, and this was actually 2012 legislation, I haven't addressed it before. You asked what it would entail. This is the list of our properties that we now pay property tax on. So that's the lot immediately south of, the two lots immediately south of Taco John's that we worked on. And the two lots along College Drive that are open for development. And the Kansas Military Board track, that's across the street. As you go up the Airport Park Drive toward the Armory, there's some land that they gave us back when we were putting the hospital lot together, it was part of the hospital lot. And 104 Lincoln, that's one we just tore down in the building.
God, taxes were $1,200 on that.
324 West Second, that's the property we were acquired from the Fords years ago that had a tax bill on it. So we just took the property, that's one lot over there. So it adds up to $15,802.34 in this year's taxes. As of now, the, the four big end lots, the first four, we are paying ourselves because that's all in the TIFF district. So that money all comes back to us as long as the TIFF district lasts. But it represents a transfer from the general fund to the TIFF fund because we pay all these taxes out of the general fund. So those lots in the, in the south development that are in the TIFF district, we pay the taxes on them. Then we get all the taxes that are paid in the TIFF district, so it comes back to us. But we shifted from one fund to the other. And three years from now, that's not gonna be in the TIFF district. And if we're still holding any of it, then we're gonna be sharing the taxes with the other entities. You asked how that shares out, so we have one more pie chart for you this evening, if you wanna get to that part. Which is this one. Here's where a property tax dollar goes, as shown by the colors there. So if we take these properties off the tax roll, that's the proportion of which the other entities will be affected. The doing of it is simple, and, and the organization is pretty much trouble-free, as nearly as I can tell. I can tell. The statute is simple. I spoke at some length with the person who administers the one in Junction City, that's, and I spoke before that with the League of Municipalities people, they direct me there, they said that's by far the most active one. Junction City overextended its infrastructure a number of years ago, and ended up with all these streets out there with no development, and ended up acquiring a lot of those lots by tax sales or whatever. And I think she said they have a thousand lots in there now, that they are holding, you know, not paying taxes and trying to...
Is that on the west end of town?
Not sure about the geography here.
'Cause, 'cause I know that there, you know, there's been a lot of development on the west end of...
I, but that's probably over by the fort.
Speculative home developers.
They were anticipating a lot more expansion out of the fort than they got, something like that, but for whatever reason, they got all these, so, so she's the one that writes articles around, talking about this, so I talked about with her. And essentially, all the, there, and I followed, I copied their ordinance, essentially, and it would be quite possible to make an intelligible ordinance just by taking the statute as it is, but they kinda reshuffled it out of apply, but I figured I'd just follow their example. But if you could cross-check what's in their ordinance reflects exactly what's in the statute, so does ours, except for one thing I have added, which is there's nothing in the statute that says that you can take money out of this and put it in the general fund. It's kind of implied. It's within our powers, I think, under our home rule powers, to add that, 'cause there's nothing in there that says you can't do it. So I added one that says that's what we could do, so...
I think it's better to clarify that, I mean...
So we put all this land in here, and in order to do that, we need to, A, pass the ordinance, and B, I would make a deed that goes with it, and file the deed, and we'd wanna get it done before the first of the year, so it'll all in the tax rolls on January one. If you approve going ahead with this thing, I would email this stuff to the assessor and the county treasurer and the county commissioner, and say, you know, here's what we're planning to do, see if I get any feedback from them about it. And then go ahead with it, and we would be done at our next meeting. So I realize there's some ins and outs of this, I felt a responsibility to propose it to you, and also, this is a year where we're trying to squeeze money into the general fund, this is one way to not spend fifteen thousand dollars out of the general fund. Yeah, I was gonna say, Larry, all I see is pros, what's the con?
Well, it's...
Our neighbors would see it as a con.
The con is, all these people are not gonna get taxes.
Like the county that's also pushed for, or pinched for.
Can, does the county have any property? Does the school board have any property that they could then do this on?
Well, I don't know.
Kind of tit-for-tat type thing, or...
What we pay taxes on is property we hold for economic development.
Oh, I see.
So, that is commercially available, if you will. So that, that's why we're paying taxes on these properties. The blue house, to me, is a little debatable, but rather than argue the point, I think we could just say, fine, we'll just take it off the tax roll, because you don't have to have a reason to do this, according to statute. If it's, if it's city property, if it's on the tax rolls, if we make a land bank, we can transfer it to it, nobody can say anything, at least that's how I certainly understand. So, so the only con is, like you say, if there's some other, although it might be to their benefit to fall, jump on the bandwagon, do the same thing.
Yeah.
But I know, I don't know, I can't think offhand, hadn't thought of it before you asked, Commissioner Parker, but is there some property out there that the county's paying tax on? I bet there's not. Or property that school districts paying tax on? We're probably the only ones holding any property for commercial development.
Yeah.
But really, on the fifteen thousand that we're paying, if you break it down, we're not talking a lot of money.
No, this isn't, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of property taxes.
Now, the, the canyon will be out fifty-three, fifty-four hundred.
Yeah.
College will be out twenty-two hundred. The school, which is probably the one that I'm the most concerned about, would be thirty-six, thirty-six fifty-five.
Well, shoot, we can always donate to the school.
Well, we've, we're, we're supplying a resource officer.
I was gonna say, we are donating to the school.
Significantly more than that.
Yes.
But, just, just to put numbers with what this will mean.
But that would help identify.
So, yeah, and this isn't a big deal one way or another, like I said, the subject came up, I already felt looking into it, I had a responsibility to put it to you, that's my own brothers, I'd just do it, but you tell me if you want me to go ahead or not.
Yeah, I'd pursue it more.
I, I think it'd be hard to have a good argument against it, and I think even those that might have an argument against it, it would be, if they had the opportunity, would do so themselves.
Would do the same thing, yes. I agree with you on that.
And it takes the pressure off on those lots and, on probably drive, you know, as far as, we're gonna be holding them a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just go, go.
Well, I'll proceed as I stated.
Yeah, all right, it's good.
Yep.
And that's all I've got to say.
All right.